I will now call this meeting of the school committee to order at five oh four P M. On January thirty first, twenty twenty two, and this meeting is specifically just for voting purposes only. And I will read our agenda. So our agenda tonight is we will have communications from the school committee and the administration. Then we will have action items which are in order of consideration of approval to accept a four thousand four hundred thirty five dollar ninety nine cent grant for two projectors and H D M I cables for the use of the Isadora software. And then consideration of approval of the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year calendar. Consideration of approval of the dispersal of student activity account fund for the class of twenty twenty. And approval of the F Y twenty three school department budget. Followed by future agenda items and then next meetings and adjournment. So.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion to take something out of order?
Yes, you may.
Would propose we begin with the F Y twenty three school department budget and if necessary punt on the calendar to the next meeting if time restricts us.
Well, seeing that you bring that up because that was actually going to be one of the items that was going to come up in a minute. So yes, I would accept a second. I believe I might have heard one. Thank you. All in favor and we need a roll call vote as we are removed. Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, the vote is unanimous. Well, actually, I guess we could have just done that by consensus, but. We do have a few communications just in advance of all of those. Kindergarten applications are out and they will be due back March seventh. Or the registration materials are due back by March seventh. And the information can be found on the district website. And also kindergarten orientation across the district will be on April twenty ninth, so please mark your calendars. Also, we have a deadline for the Wi-Fi B trivia B bags. That will be February fourth and they will be delivered on February ninth. You can find the registration for this at W W W dot Wi-Fi dot org. And one lucky winner will find a honeypot in their bag with a lot of prizes. Also, on February ninth, the Coalition for a Safer Community will be running Minding Your Mind, which will be on mental health issues in adolescents and identifying what might be what might be typical behavior that you might see in adolescent versus what might be a little bit different, and that will be at seven P M. And finally, we have a very, I'd like to just wish a very happy and prosperous and brave Year of the Tiger to those in the community who celebrate because tomorrow will be the Lunar New Year. So, Mr. Brady, you have something.
Just real quickly, on the kindergarten registration, if anyone has an eligible kindergarten student and you didn't receive the registration information in the mail, I would definitely encourage you just to reach out to the central office so we can make sure that we mail you that lovely registration and also that will get you in the system potentially for future mailing. So if we somehow missed you, please reach out. Sorry about that.
And Dr. Hackett, do you have anything?
I do. I have good news related to S R three. As you recall, we did apply for a project for McCall Univent Placement, continuation of the work that was being done prior to. And we were approved for for that project through by by the Department of Education. So that funding, I believe, is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars will be is available for us now to to move forward with that project and talking to Pete Lawson. We should be able to potentially be able to do some of that work even within the school year with vacation time potentially. Likely not February, but potentially in April. So that's good news. And I would just also share that I messed up the chair's well thought agenda for this evening, and I want to take responsibility for that and say that I would I would like to request that we table the calendar discussion because we had some discussion on it last week. And we are looking at a couple of samples right now, examples, and we'll be coming back to you on the eighth for for approval consideration. We are still talking about a school start date of, say it out loud.
August thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Perfect. So really, what's in question is just the last day of school. So we it's really would only be affected by a couple of days potentially, if if at all. So we'll be back to you with that. And if we do not get to the student activity count funds, we can do that at the February eighth agenda as well. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So with that, we will take out of order, as we had said before, the F Y twenty three school department budget. We had our public hearing just last week about the public about the F Y twenty three budget. And then in our regular meeting, we also had some further discussion of this. So, Dr. Hackett and Mr. Rowe, do you have any updates for us since the meeting and the since the public hearing, the regular meeting and the January twenty sixth finance subcommittee meeting last week? Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we don't necessarily have any updates, but we have updated the presentation to reflect the conversations that we did have in finance subcommittee, actually reflective, hopefully, of the conversation that the committee had at their at the public hearing and the subsequent meetings afterward. So with that, I will just start. We've honed down the number of budgets that you're looking at this evening, and you can notice that notice that they roll over on maintenance of effort budgets, both then grayed out because that is not the topic of the conversation this evening. What you will be seeing and what we will be talking about is my recommended budget to you for F Y twenty three. And just did a little bit of a backward look and a roll up to start with, as we had done last time, but did add with the at the suggestion of a school committee member that we include actually what F Y twenty two, the year that we're in, the current budget, the history of that budget that it was voted for by the school committee as a fifty eight million, two sixty eight, five twenty one budget or four point zero six percent. And at town meeting, the actual approved budget and the appropriate budget was fifty eight million, one fifty three, nine ninety three for a three point eight five percent increase over F Y twenty one. So just, I did not live that. I was not here for that, but I I do hear tell of the of just how that it went and and the discussion that was on the floor and just I think it's also just kind of an important reminder that you know, we 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 are subject to, as we should be, to the, you know, the will of town and on town meeting floor, and that's what it's this is this budget we're recommending this evening. Should you vote to approve it, we'll go through the same process as you know. So the rollover budget that we started with was sixty million, little over sixty point five million dollars. The important point about the rollover budget is that it was strictly a rollover. We just took everything we're doing now, brought everyone forward, stepped into next year, included contractual increases that we know about, which are the steps in potential or estimating what we think maybe potentially lane changes might be as a result of additional degree work. But we had not made any accommodations or adjustments for any potential retirement at that point or any other kinds of reductions with regard to sections, which we did discuss the last couple of meetings, which you will see reflected in the in the recommended budget. So that number is not really a good baseline for the beginning of the conversation because really it did adjust. There was a rollover adjusted rollover budget that happened in between rollover and maintenance of effort that we didn't show. But this related again to making some staffing adjustments. But the rollover budget does include, again, contractual increases and the other increase was the general transportation increase. And then the maintenance of effort budget, which we discussed before, came in at five point seven one percent. We talked about what made that up and we'll kind of show that a little bit tonight, just with regard to how it how it plays into the recommended budget. So the recommended budget that you'll see this evening is sixty million, nine hundred and four thousand, three hundred and seventy eight dollars for a two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and eighty five dollar increase over F Y twenty two or a four point seven three percent increase. Just took another look at enrollment, similar what we essentially what we added was the school year F Y twenty three projection. If you remember last time, we had a discussion about what the projections look like. Mr. Rowe shared with you how he calculated those projections when it's quite into some detail about the how that was thought about, how he applied the birth survival rate formula to it. This just gives you a sense of from left to right, October twenty twenty actual, so that is the twenty twenty one school year actual enrollment. And then you can see the October twenty one, which is current year, actual enrollment. And then you can see the school year twenty three projected enrollment. So you can see some some definitely some adjustments downward from F Y twenty, F Y twenty one from enrollment perspective. But you could also see some adjustments upward in certain grade levels for the F Y twenty three, the budget that we're talking about this evening. So that includes the the projection that was done that calculated or or made the assumption of three hundred kindergarten students for next year, as you can see over here on the left hand side. I think that's an important number to hold at this point, and I think it was, as you saw from the chart, pretty consistent historically until we hit the last couple of years, which were obviously COVID impacted. So I don't think it's the worst case scenario. I don't think it's best case scenario. I think this is a reasonable estimate. I think it's a good good number to work off of. So Mr. Rowe, I don't know if you want to jump in with fill this out any at all, or?
No, just to acknowledge that, you know, we did base the numbers for next year's projection on bringing about three hundred kindergartners. And other than that, generally, there's stability looking at next year's total enrollment compared to this year's total enrollment, although there are changes in grade levels, of course.
Moving forward. So the recommended budget that we're presenting to you tonight, these items should look familiar. I have an extra front front seat right there. That's going to drive me crazy for a little bit. What we talked about last time was trying to fill the structural gap, and I want to talk about that in a little bit more detail in a second, but we had proposed bringing forward a tuition increase, out of district tuition increase of four hundred and thirty five thousand, seven twenty, along with professional services increase of about a hundred thousand. So that number rolled in together, as you can see, is a five thirty five, seven twenty. We know we need a additional sub separate language based program at V O. That's a district wide program that's based on enrollment moving forward. That will be for grades four and five. That program does not currently exist, so that represents the the implementation of that program, which is we need to do based on the students moving forward who have that program need. And then we have an increase at the language based program at McCall from a point at the point six increase. So we currently have a point four position. We'll be adding point six to that position to make it a one point oh. Again, enrollment related as students move up through the school system who have the need for the language based program. We are currently contracting for the services of behavioral, the C B A, behavioral support at the autism program at Lynch. We are currently spending a level because of the need and the increased need, we are currently spending a level with as a with a contract that that justifies and and it would be actually more cost effective and better for, I believe, for students to actually hire our own position at this point. That is showing is cost neutral, given the fact that the amount of money we're spending on the contracts, a contracted service right now, it would be at least is the same amount of money we'd be spending on a full time equivalent. We've included four kindergarten E S Ps. We know these students, they are in our program. They're moving up from the preschool preschool program. Though the preschool program still needs the same level of staffing based on the projected needs of the incoming students, so these would be four new E S Ps for that support. As you can see, this is just a straight estimate of thirty thousand dollars per per person for for the hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Obviously, when we hire, they will be on a contract. But that's a good estimate as to where they would where they would come in. And then we want the continuation of the Mandarin program that we're currently offering at McCall. Both students are moving forward into the high school. So obviously, we want to make sure that they can be able to continue to they're involved in that in that program and that world language. So this would include a point four addition to the high school for twenty six, five oh six for a total recommended above the rollover cost for F Y twenty three of eight hundred and nine thousand, four thirty six. I'm going to come back to the out of district tuition in a moment, but I just want to roll through the rest of these slides before I do that. Again, as you can see, the budget that we're in right now, the town meeting approved F Y twenty two with fifty eight million, one fifty three, nine ninety three. The contractual increases, this includes adjustments for some adjustments for element anticipated elementary enrollment drop in a drop in elementary enrollment, meaning that we would need fewer sections. So that is factored into this as well. As well as a couple of other smaller personnel adjustments. And then from the previous slide, the programmatic needs of eight hundred and nine thousand, four thirty six for a total recommended budget of sixty million, nine hundred and four thousand, three hundred and seventy eight dollars. As we look at just what where this budget is and in comparison to the both the voted budget of the school committee as well as the town meeting approved, you can see that this is a represents a four point seven three percent increase over the current year, the fifty eight million, one fifty three, nine ninety three. So this is really just another summary slide to show the difference between the current year and what the recommended budget would would bring us in at. With that, I'm just going to stop sharing for a second and pop up another slide here. Actually, it's not a slide, it's a spreadsheet. And Mr. Rowe, if you could walk the committee through this related to out of district tuition.
Sure, I'd be glad to. We had a conversation at the budget hearing around the total cost of out of district placements and how that might look over the next couple of years. And what kind of risk we thought we could absorb in terms of budgeting for that. So what we did was put together sort of a pro forma, three year analysis, beginning with this year, then looking at what we're proposing for next year, and then talking some sort of in the abstract, but I think with some numbers that probably makes some sense about what a F Y twenty four budget would look like. So quickly, the the top box shows our projection for revenue for the three years. And then the bottom box shows possible projections for expenditures. And I want to just first look at the expenditure side the current year at the bottom of the page. And really, what's going on is we're projecting just under four point eight million as our total spending for this year for our tuition out of district placements. And the original budget had the three items in blue that are highlighted at top, meaning the two point one million from the general fund, nine fifty three thousand from circuit breaker and eight hundred and ten thousand from the current year I D A grant. What we're probably going to be facing is the need to use. Fortunately, we didn't expend all of the last year's I D A grant. That's our special education grant. Individuals with Disabilities Act funding, which we can use, we do generally use completely for tuitions. As well as pulling from our S R two and S R three funds to try to get enough funding to pay for the total projection for this year. So that if the current projection at four million, seven ninety five holds through the end of the year, those six sources of revenue will bring us within forty thousand dollars at a number. And so we're we think that's a likely outcome for this year. I want to point out that at the bottom, we note that there's another possibility that a couple of additional cases could be found where placements are necessary before the end of this year, but that's a more unlikely scenario. So that it really is a a worst case of something happened on the spreadsheet here. The likely outcome is oh, I'm sorry, you took away, right? Right, we would have had a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit this year, except that we have the S R funding to patch us through. So we have a structural budget of about four million dollars. And yes, if you appropriately blank those out, you say our original budget was four point one million against spending of almost four point eight. So we really had a seven hundred thousand dollar gap. And we're, we believe we'll be able to patch our way through that by bringing in the S R funding to get just about there. So as we begin to look to next year, what we what we did initially and staying on the expenditures on the projected cost, we worked through which are the students that will either be aging out or probably graduating, given the likely likelihood that they'll receive a diploma and then not be in need of any transitional services. We have a from our current population, we believe that'll be about three point nine six million worth of students from our current population. And then we have another population that we really divided into two groups. Those that we believe will be likely cases where we'll have to have them their students will be in a private placement where we'll be needing to pay tuition. Bringing the total projection for next year to just under five million dollars, four million, nine seventy four. Meaning that if we put together a package of revenue of five million for next year, we'd be within thirty two thousand of making budget on that. So let me just pop up to the top and talk about what the projection for next year looks like that would support that likely scenario. And it is the increase that we're projecting in this budget, which is an additional for is it four hundred and twenty five thousand? I've now forgotten off the top of my head. It's the difference between the two point one and the yeah, it's four hundred and thirty five thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. We'd add that to the current appropriation in the general fund. Within the, we also know that next year's circuit breaker funding will be the money we're bringing in this year in F Y twenty two based on the students that were served last year, F Y twenty one. So the plan is to utilize the funding we're receiving this year as the base number for the budget. That number grew from a year ago to a million, three, three, six. And then we'll use most of the I D A funds for next year, which is expected to be in the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. And we suspect we have may have some additional carry forward from the current year I D E A. And then that patched together, if we have some additional carry forward, remember the S R three funds actually can be spent through F Y twenty four. But at the end of this year, we may have some funds that have been budgeted for other purposes that may be released and basically be available to us to repurpose. If that were to happen, a package of about a hundred and forty five thousand may become available. That gives us a package of five million dollars. And so what you see is that's within thirty two thousand of covering the four point nine seven four million that we're projecting for next year. I do want to point out at the bottom of the page that the worst case scenario, if we put the S R one and two, one and three back in that F Y twenty two column, is that there could be a worst case scenario in all three of these years. This year's is a hundred and ninety if that broke against us. For next year, there is a group of other cases that the school department is facing where we're either working with students for appropriate placements. Excuse me, and or or getting assessments on students that may actually end up being placed in 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 school district where we don't have to pay tuition. So there are a number of unresolved cases, but there is a worst case scenario in all three years where things could break against us, but we're trying to look at an outcome where we're balancing risk against probability, if you will. And so we believe that this five million number with a four thousand, excuse me, four hundred and twenty five thousand, four hundred and thirty five thousand added to this year would bring us certainly within a reasonable distance of balancing this high cost area for next year. And if this were true, we also think in looking ahead to F Y twenty four, if we were able to budget an additional four hundred and thirty five if we were able to budget an additional four hundred and thirty five thousand to the general fund, this is really the strategy that the superintendent was talking about at the hearing, about trying to spread growth in the general fund appropriation over a multi-year period. If we can add another four hundred and thirty five thousand in FY twenty four, that along with the reimbursement we'll get on circuit breaker for the students served this year for when which we will receive revenue next year. We think that that circuit breaker revenue will probably grow conservatively to a number in the million five range. There's not a direct one to one correspondence. But generally, as you have more high cost students, that that circuit breaker revenue grows. So we've had an increase in students this year. It's probably reasonable to imagine that number would be a million five a year from now. And then paired with IDA funding, which probably will grow to the neighborhood of nine point nine hundred and ten thousand. That's a package of funding that's about five point four million. So if again, if we back down a package of five million spending, presume that the students would drop to the low to mid four point three, four point three eight, add another million of new students. We're in the in the neighborhood of five point four million in terms of costs. So we think that the recommendation of the four hundred and thirty five thousand that's part of the superintendent's recommendation for the general fund gives us a scenario that's that will allow us to grow to cover our downside risk, if you will, in terms of the total cost that may happen, may impact us over the next couple of years. We may also find that the spike we've seen this year is more COVID related. And if if the issues related to that are to settle out over the next couple of years, we could have a potentially a better scenario. There's also the worst case that I listed at the bottom that could happen, but it's not clear that we should be expecting that. We think a more likely outcome is what's listed as the projected gap, number one. I'd be glad to take any questions.
Mr. Brady?
Thank you so much, Peter. I just had a quick comment. I think this is very helpful for everyone's understanding. I just have to mention the fact that IDEA has never been funded fully by the federal government. And if they did fund it at the forty percent they promised when they first passed it, all of this would be a lot easier. So I just had to make that comment so everyone is aware who might not be.
Sorry, my picture keeps moving around. Mr. Nixon?
Sure, thank you. I wanted to thank Dr. Hackett, Mr. Rowe for the presentation. I was able to listen in on the subcommittee meeting that followed our last school committee meeting. That was very helpful to me and to others who may have been watching. I I think Mr. Brady ended that subcommittee with a point that really resonated with me. And it is, to the degree we can, we can more fully fund the structural deficit in year one, we minimize risk in year two. So we're essentially splitting the difference right now, as I understand the math. If we were, if there was an appetite to sort of increase funding for FY twenty three, then either that comes at the expense of some other priority that's in the budget, presuming presuming we hold to a certain percentage increase, right? Or the number just goes up. So I think it's a, it's a delicate balance, but I I appreciate the way Mr. Brady phrased it, because I think that's the right way to be talking about the finance committee and, you know, town meeting about it. Hard for me to imagine a reality where the finance committee might want to give us more money on the yellow sheet than what we asked for. But if there was never ever an opportunity for that discussion, that might be one. So I just appreciate the way we're sort of talking about this as a structural deficit over a couple of years. And, you know, if there is an opportunity for some additional funding, perhaps it it might come, but I just wanted to say not at the expense of the very few priorities that actually do show up in this budget. So I think it's very well presented. Dr. Hackett and Mr. Rowe have just done a huge amount of work with a very, very short runway, given all the other sort of obligations that are going on right now in the district, COVID and otherwise. So appreciate it and really appreciate you fielding the many questions that we've been throwing at you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from committee members?
I just also want to echo my thanks and support of Dr. Rowe and Dr. Hackett for developing this additional information and background about the, how that structural deficit looks and plays out over time. I think it's really helpful to have that communication in the community. And I also just want to reiterate something that Dr. Hackett was talking about the other day. Since we're focusing so much around special education and special education funding, I just want to also remind us all that that shows a commitment to education, to special education that as a committee that we are dedicated to our students in this district and making sure that they have the services that they need. And that this is speaks about how much we actually value special education, that the focus on it isn't looking at special education as a detriment to our budget, but as a value that we hold to providing all kids what they need.
I'm happy to make a motion if no other comments.
Thank you very much. And I guess I would just also reiterate, I appreciate all the work that has been done on this budget between Dr. Hackett, Mr. Rowe, our finance subcommittee members, Ms. Bergstrom and Mr. Brady, and then all the staff and administrators who have been helping with this as well. And I also appreciate the way that this has been tweaked. And in terms of presentation, I think that this has been, it's been very, it's weighty material that you have worked very hard to explain as clearly as possible. So I appreciate that. Mr. Nixon?
So, Dr. Hackett, could you be kind enough to bring up your slide that shows this increase on a percentage basis? Sort of rearward looking as I make the motion, so. There you go. That worked. I moved to approve the school committee's budget for the district's FY twenty twenty three in the amount of sixty million nine hundred four thousand three hundred seventy eight dollars, an increase of two million seven hundred fifty thousand three hundred eighty five dollars or four point seven three percent over FY twenty two.
We need a roll call vote. Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous in support of Dr. Hackett's and Mr. Rowe's budget for the FY twenty three school year. Thank you very much.
I also just say thank you to Pam, Jen, Lori, and everybody else, Jason, all the other leadership team folks that have been working with you to develop this. Appreciate it very much.
I would echo that.
Thank you. Let's see, pulling things over from my other screen. Okay, so next on our agenda is consideration of approval of the student activity accounts to to approve the dispersal of the monies in the class of twenty twenty student activities account back to the student, the class of twenty twenty. And we had looked at this last week. The policy subcommittee had taken up the student activity accounts. And you have all seen this memo from Mr. Rowe to Dr. Hackett just discussing the balances that are remaining in each of the class student activity accounts for the last several years. The greatest amount being in the class of twenty twenty due to school closure and from COVID.
Oh, I would just, I'm sorry, Minister.
Oh, no, I was just going to turn it over to you, Dr. Hackett and Mr. Rowe, in case you had any further comment.
Thank you. No, just I pulled up this memo, which is an oldie but a goodie, just to kind of refocus us back on the task at hand. It's got a little bit confusing in around the fact that we don't actually, as this memo states, have a policy currently on the treatment of these funds. We are working with the policy subcommittee right now to develop that policy. There are plenty of samples out there, so it should not be a heavy lift. But prior to bringing that to you, we have been asked by the, by the town, by Stacy Ward specifically, to clean up this amount that was returned in FY twenty of thirty five thousand one hundred and four dollars and sixty five cents to the class. That has already happened. But from a, from an accounting perspective, and I believe from an auditing perspective, Mr. Rowe can speak to it more clearly than I can probably. But we do need to ask that you take this vote to essentially recognize that transfer of that balance. And then as we come back to you with a policy draft, a couple of reads of that, then we can deal with the remainder of these class gifts. So this one in particular is because I believe because of the amount is drawing some particular attention as understood, it would be understood. Mr. Rowe, did I leave anything out?
No, I think you covered it.
Do we have any questions from committee members?
Just a procedural one, Madam Chair. So if I, if I go back to the previous memos, is the, the request is for the school committee to approve distribution to graduated students from the Student Activities Fund to the class of twenty twenty? That is what, that's the limitation of what we're being asked tonight?
That is correct.
I'll make that motion unless Ms. Bergstrom feels we need more detail.
Still forgetting about that mute. No, Mr. Nixon, I think you're correct. I think as Dr. Hackett said, this isn't us approving the money to be disbursed. It already has been, correct, Dr. Hackett? So we just, we just need to be able to make that approval tonight.
Okay, so I've moved.
Second. I would need a second, thank you. And a roll call vote, please. Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
And
The chair votes aye.
Sorry, go ahead, Karen.
The chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous.
And just before we close this out too, Mr. Nixon, I think it's helpful to remind people that prior, our prior practice had always been to disburse these funds to the senior class upon graduation. And that's, as we talked about before, just how, how the prior practice is and who the money belongs to. So we will, as Dr. Hackett says, we do need a policy to sort of formalize that process, both to be able to communicate to students and families what happens after classes graduate and to have best practice for ourselves also. Is that correct, Dr. Hackett?
That is correct. I would just follow up. There's a question in the Q and A I just want to address, but also to know that I think it's really important to know high schools have been handling this money exactly how it is supposed to handle it. This is not a question of the high school not doing what it's supposed to do under accounting practices, which is to return any unused balances of these funds to the graduating class. And it does go directly to the officers of the graduating class. The high school meets with the officers. They talk about that responsibility, what it means for them in prior years. I'm aware, well, let me just say, in more general terms, my experience has been that classes will use these funds for gifting up a sign or for reunions or for even potentially for scholarships. And those conversations are had with the, with the graduating officers of the class. So the high school's been doing what they're supposed to do. We're just a little behind on the policy side of it. So it is a lot of responsibility, clearly. We talked about this at the last meeting. And we know that because of the COVID situation that the class of twenty just had an extraordinary balance. This is not normally how it goes. So I just want to make sure, make that clarification.
So I'd also suggest, Dr. Hackett, that if anybody else has any additional questions, that they could follow up with central office following this meeting. Or with Mr. Mahoney?
Or Mr. Rowe, yes.
Or Mr. Rowe?
Yes. Okay. And then I guess also our policy subcommittee will be bringing the policy, which is based on the MASC reference policy J J F back to the school committee at some point in the future, in the near future. Let me just see. Next item of business is consideration of approval to accept a four thousand four hundred thirty five dollar ninety nine cent grant for two projectors and HDMI cables to enhance the use of the Isadora software. Dr. Ellen Emma, would you be so kind as to introduce this to us?
Sure. So one of the nice things about this is it will allow them to not only use it with the high school, but also this will be a benefit to WinCam when they're doing things as well. So we're just trying to upgrade our ability to do a little more things like high tech around our plays and musicals and those pieces. So the students have been involved in looking at these pieces too, which is just always such a great piece of our grants.
Great, thank you.
Can I add, can I add something?
Mr. Nixon?
So just to be really clear, so this is a grant that's coming from INCA. I don't think that was clear on the posting. It's very generous. And I appreciate it was Quinn Schaffner on behalf of Winchester High School Tech that put in the request for the two projectors and cables to enhance the use of software. He made a really compelling case, so I really appreciate INCA's continued support of our, of the district and of our students.
That is very true. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve that we accept a grant in the amount stated in our agenda for the two projectors and the HDMI cables.
A second?
Second.
Yes, roll call vote, Mr. Hopcroft?
I say aye.
Thank you. Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous. And let me see, we have tabled the, with consensus from the committee, we have tabled the discussion of consideration of approval of the twenty twenty two, twenty three school year calendar until the February eighth meeting. I will just say again, the start date of the fall school year is August thirty first, twenty twenty two. Future agenda items include the building facility update, a program of studies update, food service update, and any warrant articles for the spring town meeting. Do we have any other items from committee members?
I would just add there will be, there will be an EFPBC update to the select board on the Lynch Project on Monday, February seventh. That's a double header. There is an EFPBC meeting that night at six P M. We'll be taking some key votes on the actual preferred option to include in the PSR. We're submitting three to the state, but we need to pick one that we prefer. That's not on the agenda tonight, but we're getting there. And then we will be on the agenda with the select board later that evening for an update on the Lynch Project. And we hope to have some much needed discussion on the transfer of the Wellfield parcel that the committee is familiar with. That's looking to be really essential to support one of the, one of the three options for the redevelopment of Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Anybody else? Thank you. And our next meetings will be February eighth and March eighth and then March twenty second, all at six P M. And with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, very much.
Roll call vote, Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft? Or Mr. Nixon? I'll go, I'll give you a minute. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye, thank you.
The chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous, and we are adjourned at five. The chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous, and we are adjourned at five forty-nine P M. Hopefully, we will see you at the E F P B C in eleven minutes.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Take care. Good night.
Thanks, bye.